Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Great.
We are here for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners, June 18th, shortly after 11:00 AM. 11:02 AM. So let us all turn off cell phones and stand for the touch of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Okay, so back to the agenda. So definitely number eight, the goal and school district IGA coming off. Sorry, yeah, okay. So, and to come back in the future?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, okay, let's come back to mattress recycling. If that's just a purchase order?
I think that one we can approve, at least pending final review. Because that one, I think, is super simple and we can do it with a PO for that.
Yeah, and it says PO on the agenda.
Right. Other one on there is the electronics recycling. I'm okay with us proving pending final legal review and if they don't negotiate the terms, we can always bring it back to you. So when we get to that, we can talk about that.
That sounds, I mean, yeah, well, we can talk more, but that sounds good to keep trying to move things forward.
Okay. So I'm moved to approve the agenda with the removal of item eight regarding gathered light bill on Lake County School District.
You want to second that? Excellent.
No further discussion.
Okay. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the agenda is approved just with that one removal of agenda item number eight. Awesome. Uh, community information items. I do not have any, Commissioner, much?
Um, just, uh, Team Rubicon and wildfire mitigation is going to be coming out between now and July, shoot, was it 12th through 15th? But doing work, focusing on work on County Road 17 right away, which is very exciting. It's a long project that is long overdue, but we are attempting. We've got about 12 respondents from the letters that went out. And so we're reaching out to folks and reaching out to folks who have properties along the county road there, which is Mountain View Drive, to get, have the conversations, get people comfortable with what the plan is. And so keep reaching out to either Clear Ski Emergency Management Director or myself or other folks. Harmony with CCC, Hologic Works can kind of redirect you maybe. But that is very exciting to be happening. And I also, you know, I know, I'm sure a lot of folks have been tuning into the community updates on the interlocking wildfire. And today, our, our, Brian Banks with Forest Service and Incident Command said we're kind of going to wrap up those team meetings with the cooperative. The cooperative meetings, the fire is almost, under almost complete containment. There's some fire going along the shoreline there. And we're moving into the burn area emergency response program to understand what it is we might want to keep an eye on and do on the ground for post-fire risks in debris and water quality and infrastructure down there. Since Twin Lakes Water feeds a lot of folks downstream in the basin. But couldn't commend the team more. It's been fantastic from the start. We have a lot of expertise on the ground and really appreciate those other partners called in from out of state. Glad that everyone's remained safe. And thank you.
Talk about the mitigation town hall.
Oh, yeah, thank you. There will be two town halls for wildfire mitigation on the 20th and the 27th. And I can't remember which location is which at this moment.
I can tell you.
Thank you, Hal.
Fire station on the 20th is going to be at the South Fire Station. The 27th is going to be at Freight.
Great, thank you, Hal.
6:00 PM. And there will be, supposed to be translation services provided.
Appreciate it.
Nice, yeah, so incredibly timely.
Yeah, yeah.
I think people are focused on wildfire.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, any other, any media updates or things you want to?
Nope.
Okay, sure. Any public comment in the room? See none online? Oh.
I do have one item.
Great.
Um, the chip seal project this year has been completed. Which I know I can run to.
Oh, nice, nice. Can you say more? I keep forgetting, like, where, where, what section did you do?
So just south of the fire department, all the way to County Road 10M.
Okay, where it splits.
Yeah.
And, okay. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so I think we still have no public comment online or in the room. So we'll move on to the first agenda item, discussion and consideration of an IGA with Lake County Government and CSU for a Lake County Extension Officer. And as both, Kurt Jones, thanks for showing up in person from CSU. And I don't know, is, you know, if Tim is going to lead off or Kurt is going to lead up on this? You're both listed as presenting.
And I, and Tim and I haven't had a chance to talk, so I don't know who's starting.
Kurt, you take the lead.
Okay. So we currently have an active MOU with Lake County and CSU Extension that was signed in early December of 2021. And at that time, we utilized the template that we had available. And I think even one of the comments before we agreed to it back then was that this was really open ended. And so when, when I learned that Tim, and one of the provisions of that is that we would look at it once a year and just review and make sure everything is is still operating as both partners would like to see. And this is the annual review of that 2021 agreement, so. And so when Tim asked about reviewing it, I said, you know, would it be okay if we used our new templates? And, and so we, we put that together and then a week ago today, the things got exciting up here. So, so I'm sure that every, every one of us has been distracted by the interlocking fire. And, and so I guess my purpose today is to, is to come help answer questions, talk about provisions and maybe talk about the search process for the next director. Tim, did you have others to, other things to add?
No, that was a great overview, Kurt, thank you. I know that you and the commissioners are waiting. I was almost done with edits to the job description last week, but some things came up. So if I do have time this week to finish that, then we can get the job posted as soon as possible.
Can you guys talk about your discussions and how the job posting and that role has kind of evolved from our experience and also some other kind of arising needs?
Sure. So the original Lake County Director programming emphasis was surrounding family consumer sciences, family financial planning, budgeting, those types of things. And that was based on work that we did in our community needs assessment back in 2020. I'm sure some of that work was hampered because of the pandemic. And, and so this time around, after Harper resigned in early February this year, we started taking a look at the position as is standard for any vacancy that we have and started looking more along the lines of natural resources, programmatic focus. Obviously, working with small acreage landowners on wildfire mitigation efforts and those types of things. And so, and that was based on comments both from Manager Bergman and also Ben Cairns from Paul Mountain College Waydam as well. And just in conversations over the past three years with folks up here about, you know, is this, is this shared arrangement with Chaffee County really working? And, and I guess the short answer is it hasn't been working as well as I'd hoped when I envisioned it. So originally, we had talked about having Family Consumer Science here in Lake County with the expectation that that person do programming in Chaffee County and have more of a natural resources focus in Chaffee County and that person does programming along those lines up here. And unfortunately, that crossing of the county line didn't happen as much as I'd hoped. So, so I'm trying to listen to the input of folks here in the county and populate your office with what you're looking for. Kind of the next steps is we're very close to having the new position description finished. I submit that for approval through Colorado State University Extension. And once that's approved, in the meantime, I'm also putting together a search committee for that. And Manager Bergman is offered to serve on that search committee. We will do a national search for at least three weekends is the, is the normal that we do. The search committee will then review applications to make sure that, there's, there's two reviews from the committee's standpoint. First, a member of the committee and myself as the search chair will review all of the applications to make sure they're complete. I've had, I've had many, many people have applied for previous positions that aren't qualified and that type of thing. So we screen those out before they get to the full search committee. The search committee then scores everybody. We have sometimes a lively discussion as to who to invite in for interviews. And then, then the finalist candidates then come to, they actually participate in two different interviews. One is with the State Search Committee and that has not opened to the public. And so we, we go through that application process and then we do a, a interview then for folks that is open to the public. And so, and frequently, we can do those the same day just to save on travel costs and that type of thing. Following both of those interviews, then the search committee will provide me with their input. And then ultimately, the decision is, is mine as the hiring authority. And I'll be the person that supervises this position moving forward. But Tim can attest that, that we've had numerous discussions about how things are going. And so, so I don't, I don't, I don't do my supervision in a vacuum.
Yeah, and we've had some discussion with Tim about, yeah, these changes. I guess one, one question I had, well, first of all, I, I'll just say thanks for being thoughtful about the, you know, what's a new job description would be. And, you know, that we're having this discussion and not just sort of plowing ahead, doing the same old thing.
Of course, yeah.
You know, so I, I appreciate, yeah, thinking about, you know, the Lake and Chaffee coordination what the job should entail. I guess one just procedural question, like, in our packet, I have the existing MOU. I don't, so, we, I don't, I don't see a new MOU. And sorry, I didn't catch that earlier. Because you, Kurt, you mentioned that there's a new template.
Yeah, yeah. And there was some wordsmithing, but I guess we've been working on together.
So we didn't have a finalized clean copy, so I didn't put it in there. But Kurt sent back some outlines this morning that Chris is going to review. I can't throw it in there, so you all can look at it real quick.
Yeah. I mean, if it's not crazy urgent, I mean, I don't think there's any issue, but I mean, we could do it at our next regular meeting or even tack it on to a special meeting if we're not, or, I mean, not sure how comfortable we are. I mean, I don't think there's any.
Again, you had, you had wildfire that you were dealing with.
Yeah.
You know, one of the, one of the things that, that is not really reflected in the old MOU is that frequently, CSU Extension employees are part of the emergency response if something like this happens. And so that's why I reached out after the last public commissioners meeting, I think, last Thursday. And I have, in the course of my career, I've been involved in four different emergencies where we had to house livestock. And so that's, some of that is, is more outlined in the new MOU. Just to make sure that, you know, all the liability, potential liability issues are covered in that. And the way that the MOU is designed now is that the first portion of the, I'm sorry, I keep calling them MOUs. We've started calling them IGAs because they are truly intergovernmental agreements. And we've only been calling them IGAs for about the last six weeks or eight weeks now. So, mainly, the first portion of that IGA is, is the part that we need to get right. And then the supplement in the back is what does not necessarily, unless you want it, have to go through legal review. That's the part that we can do on an annual basis. Just Tim and myself and the new county director. And, and that's more of the operational things like, oh, we need to move the office from the library wing over to the, the main building at CMC. Those are, those are easily done without all the attorneys having to review the whole thing.
Gotcha. Kristi Field, did you have a chance to?
I, just a second, gotta be, like, two seconds. Let me take a look and see what the, the comments. Because I know Melissa had made a few requested changes.
I addressed an email to Chris and then I was sent to her. So she just got it.
Yeah, so, but I, I'm confident that, you know, I'm scrolling through it now. I'm, I'm confident that we can probably proceed, if you want, in a way, pending final legal review. And that way, if there is something that jumps up, I'm confident we can figure it out.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
That's what I'm looking at now, I'm not seeing anything jump out.
There's a large addition of, like, a dispute resolution. And then the financial obligations on page six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think that.
In this, in this.
And we had the budget numbers in our packet, so, you know, like, like our contribution. Sorry.
I apologize for interrupting. Obviously, my legal team has not had a chance to review this. And so it would, it would be pending their review, but.
As well.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Most, most of what was changed was just grammatical stuff. And I apologize that I didn't catch that before sending it over, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay. And as you said, I mean, in a way, this is like the overarching template and it's the annual, at least annual discussion. Where, yeah, the rubber meets the road. I, I'm comfortable doing pending legal review on both sides.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Colorado State University Extension in Lake County.
Second that. Okay. Call for vote?
Yeah, I was gonna say no further discussion, but would like to, yeah, see that job description and, and as, as that unfolds with, like, whether different partnerships or new connections, let's definitely discuss so we can make, set someone up for success.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, so that is approved pending legal review on both sides.
Thank you, Kurt.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Mr. Edwards, I'm willing here to meet with you at some point and visit about this weird animal that is extending, so.
Okay, yeah, please.
Very happy to do so, so.
Just send me an email?
Will do.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, apologies.
No worries.
Introducing. Okay. Agenda item number two, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with Springback Colorado Mattress Recycling. And from the agenda discussion, that would be approving the purchase order pending final legal review. Michael, do you want to say anything more about the purchase order?
Who's want that one for?
This is mattress recycling.
Okay, so we decided that last year that we would accept mattresses for recycling because they're 100% recyclable. Rob has been working on this for the last year. We got the first load ready to go. We actually got a grant to purchase the trailer to haul them down there. So we got the first load ready to go and they decided they needed a contract and they also needed payment at the time of delivery. So we set up a credit card for them, our P card, to be able to pay for that as we got there. It's about $35 a mattress that we have to pay. Everything is recyclable and should keep things out of the landfill. Anything that we keep out, we're trying to do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Springback just wants an agreement with us to be able to make sure they get things to host up.
Fair.
Is this a new, I mean, when was the, did we do this in the past? Further in the past?
Um, no, we've not done, we've looked at it in the past, but we didn't ever do it. We didn't ever initiate it.
Okay.
But after talking to, like, Pittkin County does it and some of the other counties around us do it, I'm afraid we give it a try, so.
Yeah, no, the diversion.
Get the grant for the trailer off of an RREAs grant.
Yeah.
Going forward.
How much does it cost to bring a mattress to the landfill?
It's, we're only charging $25 right now because we're using recycling money to pay the extra $10 as an incentive to recycle the mattresses.
Yeah.
Right.
Not to get too far in the weeds, like, so they can, they can, like, if mattress, like, they can take foam, like, the foam part of the mattress?
Yeah, they, they turn it into insulation for houses and.
Wow, okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. That seems like one of the harder things to tear apart and recycle. That's really.
Yeah, I, I know they don't go away when they're in the landfill. They actually put their way back up to the top of the landfill.
I don't know why that is hilarious. Okay. Any other questions here? No? Look for a motion to approve the purchase order with Springback Colorado pending legal review.
So moved.
Second, aggression. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The purchase order pending legal review is approved. Great, thanks. And then, Michael, you're up for agenda item number three, purchase order with Waste Management Recycle America LLC for electronic waste recycling.
So we have worked with Waste Management before with our recycle, our, invite, our electronics recycling. We stopped for a while and we were using another vendor that would stop or come by and pick up our stuff. And then it was, well, way cheaper, but they found that they decided they did not want to come let go anymore. So we're back looking at Waste Management to, to get certified. Proof that things were destroyed, like the computer, hard drives and the computer that were destroyed. A lot of things Waste Management will accept for free, like CPUs, laptops, anything that they can get stuff out of, make it usable. We still need, have to pay for, like, TV screens, monitors, and move things. And it's reflected in what we charge. So we charge maybe a dollar for something to get recycled or to come in. It's state mandated and we cannot put electronics in the landfill. It's not state mandated that we collect them, but it's the last option before going to the landfill.
Yeah.
We do it and we're just, you know, continuing that process. Since we haven't used Waste Management for a while, they just want a contract again.
Yeah. Does that also include, like, batteries and stuff? Or is that?
We do batteries separately.
Okay.
Through the other vendors.
Okay. Any other questions? Look for a motion to approve that purchase order with Waste Management Recycle America LLC. Is this still Waste Management or are they actually?
Yeah, still Waste Management.
Okay. Waste Management Recycle America for electronic waste recycling pending final legal review.
So moved.
Second, okay.
Further for me?
Great, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that purchase order with Waste Management Recycle America is approved. Any final legal review? Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Michael.
Agenda item number four, discussion and consideration of a professional services agreement with Arkansas River Watershed Collective or ARWIC.
Yeah. So we realized, I think, that our terms with our professional service agreement didn't expand for, to cover the, the current grants that the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative has with us. And just as a reminder, Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative or ARWIC is the group that has helped us attain millions of dollars for wildfire mitigation and watershed work. We are working with them with the natural resource damages funding that we have invested in the river over the last two decades and continuing that work with other LACOSI or Lake County Open Space Initiative partners like Trout Unlimited and DRMS doing mine mitigation, river restoration, forest health work. And so this agreement would update those terms as well as include a contribution of one of Michael's trucks that he's just looking to dispose of to include in the local chipping program and all of the other programs that are happening in Lake County. As another FYI, the ARWIC has applied for a watershed, wildfire-ready watersheds grant, if I hadn't mentioned that before. And that work is in combination with a number of stakeholders who have interest in Twin Lakes. And the work does extensive assessment of the Lake Creek and Independence Pass and over in Pittkin and on Chaffee for post-fire and other fire impacts on Twin Lakes. I feel a little, I mean, it's not, never too late to do that, but there is, there is even more work that we are hoping to receive to, to put on the ground and, and focus on in Lake County. Other than you?
Can we just offer a clarification?
Please.
So what we did, we are working on an updated personal property disposition resolution. So to kind of tide us over and make sure they can start working, we're actually going to loan in the gas for two trucks from Michael. Loan on those trucks, they've gotten clearance to add those to their insurance so they'll cover the use of those vehicles while they're working on those projects in Lake County. So we're not actually transferring ownership to them at this time until we can get the new resolution updated and stuff for distribution of private property that will, I hope, allow us to, you know, have more flexibility in disposing of surplus stuff like this.
Right, in a way that's sort of almost like an in-kind.
Yes.
I guess in-kind's the wrong word, but like, it's our contribution.
And that's what we do is if the loan is considered an in-kind, it's worth.
Yeah. And sorry, did you say, and, and what you work through or you and staff have worked through is making sure that they have the right insurance to use the vehicles and they're not on.
And they're identifying the county so that their use of the vehicles, anything that happens, they identify the county for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Great. Yeah. Yeah, because the memo, the memo said it was an unbudgeted expense, but it's, I don't see any, there's no financial contribution beyond, yeah.
Correct, yeah. I thought that was the most accurate thing to check.
Yes.
As an unbudgeted expense, since we are contributing that as a sort of in-kind. And, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other, any questions? Okay.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the PSA[1775.07] Um, okay, uh, look, uh, for a motion to approve the PSA with Arkansas River Watershed Collective.
Motion to re, approves request to continue the professional service agreement with the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative and to continue the CWPP and General Watershed Health Implementation Plan.
Second.
Okay.
It is collaborative, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Hal, Commissioner Edwards.
Oh.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, oh, aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, that is proof. Thanks, Sarah, for keeping that moving on.
Thank you.
And Chris.
Chris.
Um, agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Storm Mountain Research and Development LLC. Uh, Tim, you're listed on this one.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so the emphasis for this um, PSA um, is for the current due diligence that we're doing um, on the water project and then any potential cons- conservation easements that would come from that. Um, so Storm Research um, is Adam Bay's LLC, um, and he has the expertise and the relationships and everything needed to continue on with this project until a new pros director is hired. So I did put in there not to exceed amount of ten thousand dollars, which would come from vacancy savings. I highly doubt it will be over even like three thousand dollars. It's just trying to um, use his expertise to get the due diligence and any conservation work with GPL. Um, and then uh, any work right now that we have going on in pros in terms of open space, just any advice and guidance that he can offer me um, as we move those projects forward, because we don't have that expert resource on staff anymore.
Yeah, okay, so basically just a continuity.
Yeah, and then once the, the um uh, pros director interviews will, uh, next week and then, you know, the, once the pros director is hired, you know, they'll evaluate the need for this and if they don't need it anymore, then we don't need it anymore.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Not.
Great, okay, um, look for a motion to approve the PSA with Storm Mountain Research and Development LLC.
So moved.
A second, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of an agreement with American Road Maintenance uh, for the Lake County Airport, uh, twenty twenty-four pavement maintenance project.
In one moment, the, Josh is stepping out of the defensive driving class right now.
Okay.
But I think you guys are fairly briefed on this one, if you'd like to discuss anything.
Yeah, no, I mean, my understanding is that, I mean, this is just the sort of final, final approval of all those steps of like going out for bid, like opening the bids, reviewing the bids, discussing the bids, so uh, I think this, yeah. This is fairly performant.
Yeah, they opened up all these bids maybe four weeks ago at that meeting, and this was just elected firm.
Yeah. So.
Do you, Tim, do you think, does Josh have, I mean, is there any thing? No, I don't, I don't think there's anything to add, but you know, yeah, just as uh, Liz said, so four weeks ago, three, uh, four meetings ago. Um, the bids were opened, Kim Lee Horn and Josh reviewed those following FAA guidance, then they made the recommendation at the last meeting and then some uh, budget questions. We've done the budget work uh, on that and the general fund um, payback, if you will, to cover the, the rest of the asphalt out there, the, the actual uh, driveway, roadway. Um, then this would be the, the award, um, the award of that contract, so this work can start this summer.
Great. Okay, I think I'm good to go ahead and ask, ask for a motion to approve uh, that final agreement with American Road Maintenance for the Airport twenty twenty-four pavement maintenance project.
So moved.
Second, great, any other comments or questions?
No, 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 no.
Great, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the agreement with American Road Maintenance um, is approved. Great, thanks for moving that forward. Um, uh, agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Mead and Hunt for an airport rent fee study.
This was Josh's will.
Yeah.
And I, on this, Commissioner Fiedler, I believe you were out last week when we had the work session on this, but um, I don't know if Attorney Floyd, if you have comments or, or Commissioner Fiedler, if you were able to watch the recording, but this would be part of the proposal to start um, big picture economic development um, at the airport in Lake County, but uh, really this piece is to determine um, lot and rent. Um, uh, a market fee study for uh, hangar leases and lot, lot leases at the airport property.
Yeah, so I guess the, the question I had, and I'm still, like, I, the, the on-airport phase, like, I'm looking in the scope of work and it seems like it includes, like, like, as I'm reading it, it includes both the on, like, this sort of phase one rent study and.
It should, no, what's in teams is just for this phase one, which is in the rent study. So, I mean, just the rent study, they, they've proposed, I think it's six different phases, with the first one being the rent study and that's what we need in order to be able to start teeing up potential ground leases for the hangars and, and that type of thing. So I'm not sure what, what you, I, I checked teams this morning and I think.
So I'm looking at Mead and Hunt PSA six seventeen twenty twenty-four PDF.
Is that in, in?
But, uh, in teams.
Let me get, go with me in a second, please. I looked before, I came over here to make sure we had the right documents in there. Um, and I thought that's what we, the Mead and Hunt.
The, I don't know, so when we did, when we had the work session, there were six or seven phases perhaps on all of these different um, segments of work uh, and services that they proposed and perhaps the map is uh, for this phase really should only include that red area.
Yeah.
And not the blue area, but the map probably was taken from the entire um, complete proposal. Um, so this, this work that I understood is only on the onsite for the hangar. Um, and we did have discussion about um, really wanting to go back and look at like how we are figuring out how to develop um, and explore uh, an airport business park or the economic development outside of the airport. And these folks are, seem very much to have a lot of experience in the aeronautic world with airports. Um, and that fee study was also just the first, first step in um, kind of getting the airport's improvement plan revived or, or revised, I guess.
And so, yeah, if you look at the.
And a few of those phases, sorry, Chris, like, the first few phases were really airport-specific.
They are just airport-specific and, and each of these phases is optional to y'all, whatever you decide you want to engage them to do, but obviously the very first one is we need to, in order to try to proceed with some development out there, we need to understand what the market rents are and such, and we have not been able to independently develop that information over the last nine months now that Josh and I have been working on it. So if you look at the PSA, the very last page has the scope of this first, um, the rent study and the requested funding for that at nineteen four thirty-four. Just for that, but yeah, in terms of, it's imperfect, in terms of just excerpting out the um, the section from their overall proposal. It's just intended to be that first phase for the rent study.
Okay. Okay, I thi, I, I feel like there might need to be a couple other little catches then to mirror that.
Hmm.
Like, in, so a couple things that caught my eye, sorry.
I know that, that, what's actually, like, if you look at the, the rent study, the budget and schedule, it does talk about the different phases and such. Um, but this isn't, and, and so if y'all want, we can go back, we haven't received it back from the vendor yet when we sent it to them. Um, so we, we have the opportunity, if you want, to approve this pending final legal review so that we can wordsmith the, the, um, this first step better, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think just, I mean, I, I, I can point out the couple sentences, but I think there are a couple sentences in here that where it would be good to just remove or edit a couple things to make it real clear that it's just the first phase and that it's the on-airport, because like, for example, in the intro and background, the very first sentence says future development at, and near.
Right.
I think that and near needs to be taken out or made clear that that's
This is just the.
A potential second phase. So I think that's one area, and then I think the other one that you were saying is in that budget and schedule.
Where it talks about the different phases, yeah.
Yeah, so it says, like, at the end of that first paragraph, it says depending on when phases two and six would be initiated, and I would say like, when or if, you know?
Yes, right.
Um, cause again, it, yeah, it just sort of, and the rubber meets the road at the budget.
Yes.
Um, so it's sort of clear there, but I think, yeah, maybe just, you know, if we can do pending legal review and, and a review to just clarify that is that phase one of the rent study on the airport and maybe where, where it refers to the map, like, I don't think we need to take, waste time editing the map, but we could just say.
We can just, I would say, we can probably take that out, because that's, we're not in the actual overall planning phase for that. The, the plan that exists now has some areas indicated for hangar development, um, which needs to be more specific, but I think this rent study is an essential first step for us to even get to the point of what makes sense for that and then we can go into the actual planning and more specific information for those.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Just to be crystal clear for everyone, yeah. Um. Sarah, you were raising the broader issue of like planning, I think, I think I was hearing you raising the broader issue of our approach for planning of that off-airport, planning area, which is in the blue on the map. And I, I mean, for me, I think, I, I, I don't think this uh, affects what's in the current PSA, but I think just down there, I do think we need like a bigger discussion or to come back to some threads of different discussions about what we need. Like, are we coordinating with the EDC? Do we have current staff? Like, I think there's a bit of a bigger, sorry.
Hi.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
I ran.
Well, unless you, I mean, you can, they're discussing now, if you wanted for a couple of minutes, of this first phase with the rent study and stuff like that.
Do you have any questions for me?
I, I think just to bring it to, I think we, I, I think we're all in agreement and nothing super controversial, but just to, like, there are a couple catches in the current PSA, so it's gonna be pending final legal review and also like just a quick scrub to make sure that it's real clear that we're just doing that phase one rent study of the on-airport stuff.
Okay.
And figuring out our approach for the off-airport planning is maybe, uh, and that's where we were right when you came in. Is that if we need to have, like, sort of connect some previous threads of discussions about what the county's approach is for planning the economic development.
True.
You know, we talked about the, you know, infrastructure stuff, but I think we, uh, from my perspective as one commissioner, I think we need like a clearer sort of RFP scope or what, or whatever it is to really get clear, like, what, what current in-county, county staff capacity do we have to really move forward developing that project? You know, what do we need, you know, what, what, if anything, can the EDC, you know, contribute to thinking through this? And then what do we need to contract out? Um, you know, because I, from my view, it's more than just a study, I think we actually need the implementation help to make this a economic developable proposal. So, you know, um, yeah, so, no additional thoughts on that.
Sure.
Yeah. Thanks, Commissioner. I, yeah, and I, I think I mentioned this in the work session a bit, but I do think that there's, yeah, I would love to go revisit some of the other conversations we've had, because I do think there's strengths and different um, depth of, uh, and again, this is nothing to this specific, so sorry, this is offsite airport. Um, but I do think there's, you know, in, in capacity of both county, EDC and all of that, I think it will take, it will take a combination of those conversations to um, solicit like what might be an anchor tenant or an anchor industry or an anchor um, whatever to, for long-term uh, success and revenue generation and investment, um, where we can get the right partners and like portfolio of partners who might come in to help with that infrastructure. And then we can go also and include, you know, the local, more local conversations that have happened on relocation of some businesses that might be more appropriate to be located there and perhaps on, on Main Street. Um, but yeah, I, I, I hope that those conversations, well, I would love to, you know, I, I assume maybe Adam Ducharme might be involved in some of those conversations, so I'd love to make sure that he's kind of on the ball revisiting those for us and so that we can discuss that together sooner than later.
I, when back in October, I did the presentation on the business park. Um, to your point about RFPs, I, basically I asked Kim Lee Horn, who's my um, contracted engineer at the airport right now, like, what does it, like, what does this work scope look like? What do we need to have to make sure we put in the RFP? So I have all that data, um, Commissioner Marcela kind of derailed that conversation pretty quick about, well, we don't know how we want to use this land and we need to study for that, and then, so it kind of fell apart. Um, but I do have all that information and everything from that, I even have a presentation put together with the RFP documents, like what we need to do, what we need to, to cover stormwater, infrastructure, how much we want to put in. Um, do we want to pave anything? Do we want to develop sites? You know, this and that, and kind of like how much we want to include in the RFP. So I have that data if, if, for when, you know, we finish those conversations, we can get going pretty quick, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's worth revisiting all of that together, because I'm not sure, I, I don't, I'm not sure everyone's on the same page of like where the opportunities exist with sources of expertise. And I think that would be great to, to kind of iron out, like, what role could, could be with what partner, perhaps?
Sure, and, and to say this, uh, this wasn't like site development itself, it was sub-site planning itself. So it was, Kimmy Horn was just helping me put together the pieces kind of offline. They just like, hey, I, I sent you this thing, because they, eventually they'd like, probably like to bid on it as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they're, they just sent me some like, hey, this is some pitfalls and stuff, you have, but you have to put the RFP together. If we draft the RFP for you, then we're not allowed to, to be involved in the process, so.
Right.
Um, so they just like, here's some boxes to check about things you might want to put in there. But in that, we put it out so that we go out for bid and then we get the best, um, you know, we can choose who we want to use and then have a yard in, so.
Yeah, so I mean, so what I'm, I, I feel like we, I, I think we want to try to get that conversation back on track, because I feel like there's sort of like, we, we're, we're getting stuck in this like chicken and the egg cycle of like, we don't know what we think we want on the site, so we don't know what infrastructure to study, I think we just need, we just need to like capture all the threads.
True.
So that we don't keep like giving you stop-go.
No, no, I, play again and trust me, I, I'd love to see this just keep moving on, because
Yeah.
I feel like I've gone back a few times to kind of where we're getting talking back to now, I thought we were there in October and then that meeting kind of just went haywire. Um, but I will say like, it's kind of like the dilemma, like the chicken and the egg, like, or is like the field of dreams, like if we build it, they will come. You know, like, where is that? But I think if you show intent to build it, you might start to attract, like, people like, oh, I, I heard you guys are like moving forward with this project, like potentially, and maybe we, you know, that project hinges on if we get interest when we start kind of putting out information that we are doing this planning and then we start getting your, you know, anchors, as you said.
Well, I think that's, yeah, like, we can do, I think talking about the methods of which we pursue that, because there's that, we could build it and I think people would come, or, and/or we can maybe figure out how to get some of the tenant, like, investment and a broader community benefit of what exactly is living there.
Yeah.
Um, so I just, I'd love for us all to revisit that conversation, I don't know if we can include that in a work session in July sometime, if that's a reasonable timeline, but like for me, I would really love to get that ball rolling and get everybody on the same page at least of how, what are the different methods in which we can approach like fulfilling the infrastructure and next steps of soliciting tenants and like, um.
It's kind of similar as hang releases, like I told you in last meeting, one, two weeks ago or something. It's, it's one of those ones where you don't, some people upfront or they don't want to do the work, like, it's a lot, it's like a big hurdle, they don't want to be the person driving the, you know, pushing the train from the back. Um, but once you start. Um, but once you start seeing it going and maybe we have one or two investors and then they start seeing that forward progress, people, the barricades are down, it's much easier to get through. Um, you start seeing a lot more interest after that point. So it's kind of like, you know, risk reward. We, I mean, I I'd love to have some letters of intent before we start, you know, we start digging or anything. Um, but I, and I think we, you know, if we get a few or get a couple or one, we that's, you know, hey, we can start moving forward with this because. We'll, you know, open the floodgates of interested parties now that the the hurdles are gone, so.
Yeah, and again, I mean, just to to tee up like the work session, whenever we can schedule it is, I I think it feels like maybe. More more than we can put on your plate to like do that, you know, uh, be the orchestra master, you know, of the blue area. Like that's, I mean, keeping all those threads together seems like more than just the airport manager's job.
Sure, no, and I and I would say I I, this is well out of my scope of expertise, like I've learned a lot.
Yeah.
Just kind of doing stuff and it was tasked to me, so I kind of just plowed through it.
Yeah.
But I'm sure I'd much rather, if if we had to pay somebody to do it, I'd, it's gonna be a better, better, better product.
Yeah, and 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 to me, I think that's, that's a question we need to sort of ask and answer is like what, you know, what, yeah, what what do we have both the expertise and bandwidth for? You know, I mean, yeah, you've pushed a lot of the kind of infrastructure part of it, but we need, yeah, we just need to corral. The economic, like what we actually wanna be built and like, yeah, and I think there's openness to. Hiring, you know, whether it's an owner's rep or a project manager, I don't know what the right term is either. But I think we need, we we need just some bandwidth to be able to keep moving this forward and not, yeah, repeating the chicken and egg cycle, so. Okay.
There's no day.
Yeah, Tim, go ahead.
I might just add to as part of this transition to project-based leadership and the team leadership, so. The board does take action on this, right? This. Will continue the work of the team that already has been doing this, but will also formalize it between the airport director, community planning and development director. Tourism and economic development director, public works director, myself, and then as the EDC becomes more stabilized, bringing in the EDC. Um, and then same as the chamber grows and bringing in the chamber, and of course, as well as the attorney's office, so. I noted on your comments, um, and that I just want to assure you that there's a team in place to lead, um, lead this project forward.
Okay, and I I I appreciate that. And again, not not trying to like, su- um, uh, you know. Kick kick anyone out of the team, just I think there, it seems like there's an openness from the VOCC to add some capacity. You know, internal, external, whatever is needed, just sort of like really give that team some clear marching orders and capacity. Um, so well, you know, wel- welcome thoughts on that when we get the work session scheduled.
Uh, us engaging Mead and Hunt, that has been exceedingly helpful.
Yeah.
Um, cause you get, you get an outsider perspective of how to do it, and yet they've worked with other, like their Eampa Valley's got a business park they're developing right now. So they have, and they can, you maybe they don't, but they can put you in touch with people and it helps them time, so.
Yeah. And and I think maybe, I mean, to, you know, so I think the question is like, and yeah, i- i- is Mead and Hunt the right. Set of expertise, you know, for the blue area as well, or are they more airport focused? I think that's.
Well, I think we, I think we have to go up for an RFQ or an RFP.
Yeah.
Um, RFQs are request for qualifications, so you contract with them and then they, you kind of use them for whatever term you set.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, and like there's, but there's tons of Mead and Hunt sent out there. There's Mead and Hunt, there's Kimmy Horn, there's Fulton and May, there's Dibble, there's Garber, there's all these.
Yeah.
And a lot of those are air, like I know this from airport, cause they do that development, but they also do like, um, what's the civil engineering side of stuff? They do a lot of that outside of that. I mean, Kimmy Horn's like a six thousand person firm.
Yeah.
Um, they're huge, they're nationwide, so, uh, any of those I think we could tap into, and I think, you know, we put it out for RFQ, then we get it, we get the. People can come, give us their best and then we can choose from that, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, thanks for entertaining that tangent, but it is important. So back to the actual decision for today. Um, I think the the motion I'm looking for is to approve the PSA with Mead and Hunt for an airport rent fee. First pending final legal review and second with some clarifying edits that make clear that we're addressing solely. The rent study at the on airport portion of that.
So moved.
Second, great. Any other comments or questions? Great, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so, um, that is approved, PSA with Mead and Hunt with those two conditions. Tracy, was that?
I saw it a little late.
Clear.
It's okay.
Not after that.
Okay, um, agenda item number eight was, uh, moved to a later date, um, DVD, so on to nine. Uh, discussion and consideration of a MOU between GOL and High Mountain Institute. Um, or HMI for out-of-school time programming, Brian.
Yeah, when was yes? I hope you are all doing good today.
Yeah.
Uh, we're just seeking to collaborate with High Mountain Institute, which is a nonprofit educational institution here in Lake County. Uh, for two main programs, one to help support our staff trainings and, um, our. Uh, particularly our high school youth employment, uh, program that we have, so that they can do an overnight at their campus as part of their, uh, leadership training. Before going into the Rocky's Rock summer camp season. And then, uh, because we're constantly seeking to expand our program offerings in a responsible way. Uh, we have come to see that the older age groups in Rocky's Rock. Uh, may not be as engaged with typical programming, so we would like to offer. Uh, an overnight backpacking experience for those youth. And because, uh, we are leaders in this realm, but we don't have that expertise and HMI has been doing that for two decades or so. Uh, so they have that expertise to do that, and they're also seeking to be more involved with the Lake County community. And, uh, for this year, uh, there is no exchange, uh, financial exchange between our organizations. Uh, we're both covering our respective staff and incidental costs, um, but that is the main gist of this. Um, I'm here for any questions that we may have or comments.
Yeah, so is the idea basically just gonna expand, like, cause they do, they do that like one week currently for.
They do.
Mid school age, so this is gonna expand that?
So from my understanding, they've historically offered the Lake County backpacking trip for seventh and eighth graders. Uh, here in Lake County, um, but they are re-exploring. What's the future for that program looks like. Uh, their historical partner has been full circle. I believe they may be moving away from that type of program. Um, so there's an opportunity with us to be able to offer that, and for this year would just be. A, uh, three-day, two-night trip on the youth would do, um, and. Uh, it would be led by HMI with support from, uh, GOL, so.
Great, okay.
I don't have any questions.
And then, uh, just another point on this, uh, we're hoping this continues to be an ongoing partnership, so future years we'll. Come back, uh, with this, um, exciting opportunity for the kids.
Excellent. Sorry, I do have a question. Uh, it it, you probably said it and I apologize, uh, is it gonna be focused on seventh, eighth this year with the new just partnership and exploring that? Or is it gonna expand to older kids?
So through our state childcare licensing that we obtain each each year, because we're a, uh, state. Um, childcare center for the county. I believe that it's a lot easier to do that with older age groups and it does depend on enrollment. Uh, so it could be anywhere from sixth to seventh graders, depending on how our numbers look like. And we always prioritize local kids over outside, out of the county, uh, individuals or s- second homeowners who come here. Um, but it would mostly be those older age groups, because we have seen, just in general in Lake County, there's a drop-off of. Uh, services offered for that age going into junior high and high school. Uh, so GOL is trying to fill in that gap in some way, and this is just one of the beginning portions of that.
Is there, would it go to ninth, tenth, eleventh, or do you think, no, I think there'd be that much interest from the even older kid?
Uh, so that could, it could potentially expand into that outside of other current offerings for, uh, tenth to twelfth graders.
Uh-huh.
We have two programs or pathways program, which is high school employment, and they're able to get employed, uh, with us, two weeks paid training. And they work all of summer camp, um, and they have opportunities throughout the year for employment within our programs and school events.
Mm-hmm.
And we also offer the Wilderness Experience Course, um, with, um, Colorado Mountain College. And that is a dual enrollment course, uh, for high school students who opt to do that, um, each spring semester. But it, this partnership would open the doors for further exploration with the age group for some sort of. Potential overnight programming or day programming, um, to, uh, reach that gap that currently exists in the county.
Thank you, Brian.
Are those course offerings filled each year?
Uh, for the Wilderness Experience Course.
Yeah, and the the pathways, well.
Uh, so the pathways, this year we historically have hired up to ten or eleven. This year we had enough funding to hire for, uh, twelve students. We're hoping that's an ongoing thing, um, that one does get filled. Our Wilderness Experience Course, uh, sometimes does not meet full capacity. CMC's course limits are around twelve to fifteen, and just due to the nature of the course, some students are not able to commit. For the full course during the school year because of actually curricular engagements with theater or, uh, sports. But for that trip, it's, uh, been modified throughout the years, but the current iteration is four co- um, day-long courses. From January to April with a week-long trip in Utah, uh, for all the, uh, current participants.
And do you get a good response from him?
Yes, um, that is one of our, from both counselors, uh, at the schools and students, we get great, uh, feedback from that. Because most students who are here in Lake County have limited opportunities to even explore within the county due to us, we know bedroom community and. Uh, most of the students we engage with are routine, uh, so it's just a great opportunity for them to learn about what's out there.
Thank you. Cool, okay, uh, I'll look for a motion to approve the MOU between GOL and High Mountain Institute for out-of-school time program.
So moved.
Second, great, and we're good, so call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks, it's approved.
Thank you.
You all are welcome to County Attorney for a moment to, you know, to a sec, visit for Rocky's Rock this night.
Oh, yeah, nice. Um, on to agenda item number ten, um. Uh, discussion and consideration of contract amendment number two to engage with Talx or T A L X?
Talx.
Talx Corporation, a provider of IFRS verification services for use of the work number for income verification. Lauren?
Yeah, so DHS, um, um, uses these services mainly to do income verification for. Individuals seeking public assistance. Um, the state actually negotiates this contract on behalf of counties and counties can opt in. Uh, so it just is really an easy thing for us for workload. It has major employers, Safeway, gas stations, et cetera. And we can easily check pay rate, income, um, and time of employment. There are some issues we're double checking, uh, with the state, uh, we've heard that it takes a long time for the state to negotiate these contracts with IFRS. It is a current contract until twenty twenty-four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we're just checking with the state to make sure is this a current year or was there a typo? So I think we're just asking for approval pending, uh, legal review.
That's fine.
Okay. The question?
No questions.
For me? No questions. Okay, I will promote them to approve the contract amendment number two to engage with Talx Corporation. Um, uh, for the use of the work number for income verification pending final legal review.
So moved.
Sir?
Right, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, that is approved and a legal review, thank you. Um, number eleven, discussion and consideration of a core services purchase of services contract, is that right? It's helpful. Core services purchase of services contract with Soul Vista Health. To provide mental health services to Lake County families who are not Medicaid recipients and who have been referred by the Department of Human Services.
True.
Yeah, so this day allocates funding to each county and it's called our core services, and it's specifically for, uh, individuals engaged with DHS. Um, who need mental health or substance use services, and so our region, um, multiple counties pay into Soul Vista. To be able to provide services at will to, um, young people or families that are not enrolled in Medicaid. But don't have health insurance, uh, and so we pay Soul Vista whatever we need these services on a fee-for-service basis. Up to fifteen thousand dollars, uh, regionally, um, so this is an annual contract that we're just hoping to continue.
No questions for me?
No questions.
Okay, um, look for a motion to approve the core services purchase of services contract with Soul Vista Health, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Um, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, the core services purchase of services contract with Soul Vista Health is approved, great, thanks. Um, number twelve, discussion and consideration of the Colorado Division of Veteran, Veterans Affairs. County application for semi-annual payment for the state fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four for the July-December pay period.
Yeah, so, uh, by statute, we are required, each county is required to have at least one veteran services officer or VSO. Um, and we are able to bill for some of the, um, salary expenses, uh, with that, um, position. And so this is just our, um, every six months, we send in, uh, basically a contract asking for reimbursement to the Division of Veterans Affairs.
Okay. Is this something that we, so we just do this every six months, okay? I wonder, just going forward, I wonder if this could like move into the consent agenda, if there's anything, or is it not?
So we do the, um, veteran services report.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is more of a guarantee that we will continue to pay for a portion of this service, so it could.
Okay. Uh, uh, I mean. Just trying to be efficient and like the things that really are just recurring and nothing changes, that seems like a consent agenda-ish kind of thing.
Of course, thank you.
Speaking of changes, do we have an increase to our, uh, request that you know of? And or I know Harry Beck was, has been looking at other ways to reach out to the community and engage, um. Any other report back on that that you might have gotten from him?
Not that I have, but I think checked with him.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, sorry, uh, look for a motion to, uh, approve the Colorado Division of Veterans Affairs. County application for semi-annual payment for the state fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four for the July-December pay period.
So moved.
Second.
I think it's also January and June pay period.
Oh.
Is it not?
It's January through June, yeah.
Oh, okay, then.
Both are. But it looks like both are checked, but January, June, um.
Okay, so for those two pay periods, January through June and July through December, sorry for that.
No, that's okay.
Um, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so those two pay periods are approved. Thank you. Um, agenda number thirteen, discussion and consideration of a master services agreement with Vero for internet access at the Lake County courthouse. The annex, Get Outdoors Leadville, Public Health, Office of Emergency Management, Public Works, Huckpin and the airport. And Liz, you are on your.
So our current service provider is Lumen, and all of the people that I've chatted with have really struggled with this service for a variety of reasons. Including we don't have service with them. Wait a minute, no, we do have an account with you, we really do, I promise. Um, so through all of these different challenges, Tom really explored what the, what other solutions we had out there. He started engaging with Vero, um, and it has just been a really, really pleasant experience for Tom, for myself and also Chris. Uh, she met with the Vero folks last week with myself and just working through the language in the master services agreement was just. Really a breath of fresh air and they acknowledged that we existed, so we would, our we term. So we would, are we term with our Lumen contract in September? And what we're doing is we are working to be able to have kind of a seamless switch off into Vero. And we're doing all of that legwork now so that the facilities that you mentioned um can have sustainable and successful Internet services.
Yeah. The only question I had is um is is that price like competitive? Like that maybe I haven't been paying attention, but that it just struck me like a little high that like a payment for every single, you know, but I guess if if there's multiple, I mean, that that one gig is a lot, like.
One gig is a lot, we're doing fiber optic and and linking it throughout all of these different links and spaces.
Gotcha, okay.
So it should provide a more seamless Internet solution without interruption.
Mm-hmm.
But um you definitely pay what you get for and we're and we're laying down lines, so um.
Yeah.
And they are, and they are waiving installation costs and moving those lines.
I did notice that, yeah.
So we're adding lines, cause we went through this with Lumen and upgrading those lines.
Mm-hmm.
And this is increasing redundancy or.
Hook back.
There we go.
Buck, you're muted.
Sorry.
Thanks Jane. Uh, I was asking if, I said, we discovered some years ago that we were not on a state-like fee contract or some agreement that we could have, we were eligible for through Lumen. And transferring over that saved us twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, is there such a?
I'm not, I have not heard of that with Lumen, with uh Vero yet. Um, and so, and I'm sorry, I wasn't involved in the initial, in the, anything but the contract negotiations with them. So I'm not sure in terms of that's something they're seeking or if they do have it in certain areas or or what.
I'll reach out to the rep to see if there's any different rate or different packages for government entities, I want to see what shakes.
Perfect, okay, appreciate that. Um. Should we wait for that feedback? Is it pretty important that we do that now pending like note better?
I was gonna say, the, and we need to have some transition time because we wanna make sure everything's in place and working before September when we, you know, cut Centurion Link loose. To make sure that we don't end up with a gap in in services and that, so um. I'm, like I said, I wasn't involved in negotiating. Tim, I don't know if you were involved in the the fee negotiations with Vero or not, but.
Uh, no, I was not. Greg and Tom led those.
Cause this has been in the works for a while and part of it was trying to figure out what their schedule is gonna be. The existing facilities, no issue, it's the adding on. Cause they have to get the permit from the CDOT to tunnel under twenty-four to get service over to DHS and Public Health.
Oh, right.
So that's taken us a little more time to figure out, but.
Yeah.
E- even if, I mean, we can certainly, i- if you want to approve pending a final review or something, we can certainly ask them about the rates and stuff and how that was um deter, how the rates that they're promoting are determined. But um, I I I would not recommend we start them back.
I I I think we can approve, and I mean, do you, does it actually, other than this question, does it need more legal review or?
They have a sound off on what we've presented them, so.
I mean, I think we can approve and then separately, we can just direct staff to ask this question. And if that opens up a can of worms, then we can open up a can of worms, but.
Right.
We can approve it as it stands.
So the way the contract term reads as well is that we, they waived the installation charges and stuff, but that's somewhat based on us not canceling the contract within the first eighteen months. So we're kinda locking into them for eighteen months with the service. If we cancel after that, there's no fee or additional stuff owed if it ends up not working. The the folks that, at least I know that I've interacted with, that are up their food chain for negotiating these things have been incredibly reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
And they they want the business, so I think they'd be open to if we say, hey, and I haven't, I haven't been asked or had a chance to compare what they're charging to what we're paying in Centurion Link. But I mean, do know that this service we're getting from Centurion Link and their system is not at the level of what we'll have with Vero. It it advances us in terms of that, so.
It looks comparable for the the pricing, at least what I remember. But I also wonder, um, they, is the airport, the airport is another redundant, like backup servers, I believe? Do we need to add the modular in the airport to this list? Cause that was.
Well, so and once we have service there, we can use wireless access points to push it out. So I don't know if we necessarily need that to have a service area, but that is something to explore. Um, just to get clarification on it, um. The servers are in the modular?
I understood we had a backup at um Road and Bridge and the airport.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think the backup servers are at the airport anymore, Commissioner. I believe it is through um the courthouse and then Public Works at Road and Bridge and then uh the cloud backup.
Okay, okay.
But we will confirm that. Okay.
Um, yeah, I would explore that as well, just just.
Okay. Service order. Cause are are these documents in the in the teams for them to see the service order?
Yeah, the service order is in there, left, hold on.
How much does this increase our? Monthly Internet costs? If it increases it?
Did. Please, did you hear? Sir, do you wanna keep asking that question, like liquid?
I'm sending.
I think she's.
In email to account people right now.
Okay.
That what our current bill is.
Okay. Um, I mean, I still think for me, I mean, it's, it, I mean, the larger motivation is to get adequate service.
Yeah.
So. Do you wanna, do you, do you want that answer before we?
Um, no, I think just like those three things to explore and get just a little bit more information back would be great. I, I mean, I have Attorney Floyd and I have uh struggled through a lot of uh uh negotiations with Lumen for years, so um I, this sounds very exciting. That bureau seems to be a, an improved partner.
And here's something else, yeah, to think about too, is that our current contract expires in September. When they quoted to provide service to the DHS Public Health Building, their fee was um seven hundred and seventy-five dollars monthly recurrent charge for that. Um, and then the additionals, I'm looking at.
Those Lumen.
It was like, yeah, for Lumen is like twenty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Just for that one location.
Yeah.
To get them service for both DHS and Public Health. So I I'd fully expect if we were to continue with Lumen, the cost to renew with them is gonna be significantly higher than what we're seeing now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's almost double.
Yeah. Yep. That's, I just, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perspective that I was, I don't remember exact numbers, so um I I just, I suspected that might be the case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I have no other questions.
Okay, um, I will uh look for a motion to approve the Master Services Agreement with Vero for Internet Access at the Lake County Courthouse, Annex, Get Outdoors Leadville, Public Health, uh OEM, Public Works, Huppin, um and Airport.
So moved.
Second, great, uh call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for everyone who worked through that. Looking forward to September. Uh, number fourteen, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado, authorizing the approval of the second amended subdivision improvement agreement for the Mountain Gate subdivision.
So this project has been trying to get completed since two thousand and eight. And in two thousand nine, he was unable to complete all the public improvements for his project. It consists of twelve single-family lots. As a result, the BOCC called on his letter of credit for sixty-four thousand dollars and we still retain that money. And he's trying to pull building permits and between Ann and myself, we decided to come up with a plan to ensure he can get the road paved, which is not very long, it's a hundred and twenty linear feet. Um, it's less than a hundred thousand dollars to get it done. And so the proposal that you're looking at is to amend the SIA lien all the remaining single-family lots. There's eleven of them, each lien will consist of seventy-five thousand dollars. And we can also retain the ability to foreclose on those. And hopefully we never have to go there and we're in and out this summer and I can come back to you and say, hey, it's done. And uh so that's, we will record those once you execute and approve this resolution. And Marty Wocman's construction included in the resolution, SIA is a contract um that addresses a scope of services that doesn't require a payment until it's all done, so that helps all of us. And so, okay, we can approve this today and move forward.
Okay, great, and 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 just so I can like say that back, so I'm understanding right? Like, so so basically, this is protecting the county to make sure that those conditions, like what the developer promised to do, it's protecting the county to make sure that it gets done or that if it doesn't, we're sort of financially protected. So up there, okay, excellent.
No, sorry, and the first, the the first project that the owner wants to do is pave the road?
Well, he has to pave the road or we're not gonna issue building permits.
Gotcha.
Or, and as a result, he can't convey the lots, right? Cause no one's gonna buy them as long as they know we're not gonna cooperate with them or a listing agent or anything of that nature, so he's really stuck.
Yeah. Okay.
Great.
Great.
And and I guess call for side, maybe totally domain, but just for our information and and the developer is now, like, I mean, this has been potentially in the works for a long, long time. So we think the developer is more active now?
Well, I think, so the good news about this project is all the lots are paid for. He doesn't owe anybody any money. So if he can list these properties for two hundred thousand dollars, first of all, we get paid immediately on the first sale. If he can't make, so that's really what we've structured. So there's a demand for that, those properties, but he's really handcuffed because we're not gonna work with them until he completes that paving.
Yeah, yeah. So that question was more just sort of curiosity.
Yeah.
About what is or isn't moving in different parts of the county.
And with such different, there's such varying infrastructure access abilities in the area. Just all the infrastructure, the 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 subdivision has access and has all the infrastructure and building permits could be issued if.
All his infrastructure is in place, so the sand district, the water districts, it's all installed. Even um bone, all the, all of it's there, all, they're ready to go.
Yeah. This is, this is the subdivision just past the cemetery on County Road four.
Correct.
That's past West Woods and the tree thinning area.
Mm-hmm.
This is just west of, where's, West Woods?
It is, it is southwest, yeah, just, yep, across County Road four.
This is southwest?
It's a nice property, it's wooded, it's flat and.
Yeah.
Sure.
I appreciate the thought and the creative, uh yeah, creative thinking going into uh making something like this work. Cause um I think we definitely wanna hold people accountable, but we want to also catalyze progress with development. So, thank you, Ruth.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay, okay, um, so, any other questions?
More questions?
Okay, um, then I call for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado, authorizing the approval of the second amended subdivision improvement agreement for Mountain Gate subdivision, Lake County, Colorado.
So moved.
Second, and call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen is approved. Great, thanks. Uh, and final agenda item, um, number fifteen, updates from OEM and the Sheriff's Office on the interlock and fire.
Good timing.
Yes?
Uh, good afternoon. Um, play a little catch-up here on all the information going on uh with the interlock and fire. But first, I wanna keep harping on that, this has been um. These were a search and rescue mission to find anybody, um basically, you know, off of our initial response efforts. We're able to pull a bunch of dispersed campers um outside the the danger area. Uh so it's been, it's been good on that. Uh, the worst report of injury has been a cut above somebody's eye that we put a band-aid on, good to go, so.
Wow.
So it's been incredible. Um, here shortly in about an hour or so, mark full week. Um, so this happened uh Tuesday afternoon last week is when we got our first reports of uh smoke sightings in this area. Um, we had multiple nine-one-one calls coming in, we sent out all first responders to the scene. Um, so that initial attack by, on the fire was by our local fire station and their crews and um by Chief Daly's dispatching of resources immediately getting Forest Service involved. They knew the land belonged to Forest Service immediately, um so that made that decision easier on who who to send out. Um, so that initial mutual aid period, um, we all went. It was to try to save life, to to save as much property as we potentially could. And um from the Sheriff's Office standpoint, we sent out numerous resources from the patrol deputy all the way to our victim advocates. Um, and our detention deputies went out also to help with clearing. Um, as you guys know, in the uh Interlaken, Interlock and Trailhead by the dam, there's a lot of dispersed campsites. Um, and then even on the southern side, there is a Forest Service Road three ninety-nine that turns into Lake County Road fifty-nine. Something new I learned is we have a little county road there. And um they went up there and found uh one dispersed camper up there, they didn't know what's going on. So I'm glad that they were able to find that person because shortly after that, the fire, the fire crossed the road. And so, um, so they they got dangerously close, but you know, they're, they didn't know. They were just up there to clear people, so um that went really well. Um, as you guys know, as I said, it started on Forest Service, that means it is federal land. Um, the state came out to assist and um Claire brought a map that we can show um kind of that split of where we're at with what lands are affected. Um, but basically, we're looking at this collaborative effort to contain this fire. That's our local governments involved, state's governments involved, and the federal governments involved. Um, the the teamwork, we've all been on the same page, it's it's been incredible. And I hear this message over and over again from everybody involved. And we even heard from from Nick Ostrom today, um that he's been, he, this is. this is his twenty sixth, I think he said, um fire season, and he said this is one of his best teams that he's worked with. So it's not just me saying, it looks good from my end, I'm hearing this from across the board. Um, so it's it's nice when they've set those objectives that meet, that meets everybody's goals. You know, we're talking watershed, we're talking preserving life and property, um containment, healthy burn. Um, and you know, I don't have the list memorized, but all those objectives I felt were um placed on an equal importance. Uh, we didn't see an over focus on this and then ignoring that, um so I'm very grateful for for that. Um, the state has been tremendous in providing resources. Um, they've brought in a lot of the aircraft that you guys saw. They brought in crews, they had air tanker helicopters, so the state's been very helpful too. Um, it was nice that the Forest Service said that their goal was a hundred percent suppression. And I bring that up because these are things that I'm recently learned, is that sometimes Forest Service may let a fire burn um just for mitigation work, or maybe they may feel it's healthy. And that's where we have to have some further discussions, I think this may affect this neighborhood or may affect that, and and so anyways, none of that's been present, it's just all the same age. Uh, as you guys know, the area, it's um, the the fire, I went and looked at it today, actually, the the site is pretty obvious where the fire started. Um, you can still see the padded area where there was a tent, um the firing didn't look well built. And uh that's where the fire investigators said the fire started. They do believe it was a day or two old, um so they don't think it was a fresh flame or anything like that, it's just however the, that magic works. I don't understand that portion, I'm not a fire investigator, but they identified that as the spot and it could have been potentially a couple days old. Um, that's where it started and that was just south of Interlockin'. It's it's a short walk to that campsite. Um, if you guys are familiar with the area, the trail kind of splits, the CT trail, you can take the Interlockin' trail, um or you can go around the backside, and that backside is where that spot was, and that's where the fire started. Um, it thankfully, the wind was blowing away from those structures. Thankfully, a lot of mitigation work was done in that area back in two thousand and eight, directly around Interlockin to help protect that structure, so um some of the fire crews that were there um have local knowledge. The incident commander, uh John Marco Lunes, um that spent over a decade in this area, he was part of that mitigation work. And I think that's another reason why we worked well together is because even though they're federal, they have local knowledge and local attachments to the area. Um, yeah, the winds were blowing southeast away from the structure, and that's why that fire grew that direction, was really the wind was powering. Um, so then that's where my concern came in, is there's a neighborhood on Lost Canyon Road, um although there's quite the sage break. And the sage is pretty green right now, um just for safety precautions, we put in a pre-evac notice for that neighborhood and initially extended it to the Balltown neighborhood, uh just because they're fairly close also. Um, so that, that message was put out uh door, door to door by deputies. They went out, made contact with as many people as they could just to let them know this is a pre-evac notice. Um, that eventually grew into JP County, um I worked a lot with Sheriff Speezy down in JP County, and just to keep him in the loop. Um, this was really close to his county and and could have potential of crossing over into this one. Um, so he put a pre-evac notice in for the Cache Creek area and also a little further south, um to play it safe around Clear Creek. Again, a lot of dispersed campsites, he sent deputies up there to make sure everything was, everybody that was in that area was notified. Those have since been lifted. Um, so we've, uh, we did that Saturday night, uh again, in collaboration with JP County to not send out a confusing message about spot lifting certain things. We were all comfortable with it. Um, I had thorough discussions with the operations team, um with their PIOs, with our PIOs, with JP County's um OEM, JP County Sheriff, and we decided at nineteen hundred, we're gonna do this brand release, and um that was executed really well, and there was no, no confusion that I heard of. Um, we've also taken additional steps in that Lost Canyon area, um in in conjunction with Public Health to hand out masks. And um so that that was a, an effort done by one of our deputies and Betty Benson. They went out door to door in that neighborhood, handed out a handful of masks for anybody who wanted it, cause that area was being affected by the smoke quite a bit. And then just also have a contact Public Health if there was any other health concerns. Um, so that that was done um from a traffic standpoint, and um Claire, would you mind throwing up a map?
Well, it was in the room after the meeting for you guys to look at as well.
You don't mind holding it?
No.
I can hold it.
You'll hold it?
We're all together.
Holding together.
Teamwork.
Cause that's how the community works.
Hold it.
Really?
I, I.
She's doing a great job. She's doing a great job.
Also, just to walk you through the map, this is uh the affected area. Um, we're landing in about seven hundred and, close to forty acres total. Um, and the past couple days, they've claimed uh eighty six percent containment, which they end up drawing a black line that looks to go all the way to the lake. So the little section that they're still watching, cause as you can see, it has worked its way start back down towards the lake, but that's not a huge threat, obviously. We have a nice barrier there. Um, but they are holding true to their line, and if it does cross that line, you get closer, they're extinction. Well, jurisdiction wise, this is Forest Service, we have BLM, and then here's our our private sector. This is where now this becomes my deal. And and where I have to execute on my fire warden responsibilities is the sheriff was encumbered to our our private, private land. Here's the JP County line, and so this section here, three ninety nine, um I learned from uh Michael Irwin that this is that county road um fifty nine, so the county road just goes from here to here, and that's, that's where the, as you can see, the fire crossed. So deputies' initial response, that's what I was telling you when they saw the fire cross, so it was right about there. Uh, roadway wise, um we're dealing with two major state highways. We have Independence Pass, that's now open, so we have a lot of traffic coming through there. They've set up our initial um command post was at the um, the Mount Albert Power Station here. That was moved to Dexter's Point, and then the incident command post was moved to Fire Station Two. And that's through today, how they're gonna operate, they're moving the incident command post to Dexter's Point to reduce its footprint a little bit. So at this location. So this is concerning, and here's my trooper eyes coming out, is secondary crashes. We have a lot of people stopping and or locations or driving and looking, and this could cause a secondary crash. We have a ton of fire trucks coming in and out of there. So we put a strong effort, I talked to every agency possible that has red and blue lights to help us be present and enforce traffic if needed to help slow people down. Um, and it's worked so far. Also messaging, uh just to avoid the area for a little while, allow the fire crews to work. Deputies report highway eighty two traffic was um slower than normal over the weekend, even though it was Father's Day, so that messaging paid off. We wanna reduce that a little bit, so we're not hurting our Twin Lakes businesses. So we're, we're sensitive to that also, but we wanted to, you know, make sure safety is number one. And as you see, highway twenty four and eighty two are, the junction's right here. So as they go to the incident command post, they have to drive here and then head north on twenty four. This is a scary intersection. Back to my trooper days, I I went there too often. I've, I've seen horrific crashes there.
This is fatal for her.
Yes, correct. This is uh, so it's a scary location, we've identified that and tried to reduce um speed through there more so than normal.
Yeah, I was.
Um, here is Lost Canyon Road, this is where our residents are. I don't know the exact count off the top of my head, but it's around twenty residents we have here. Um, this is County Road twenty five, this is twenty eight A, so a little mistake on the map there, but um this is the area we focused on for that pre-evac notice. So that was, uh, let's see, are we missing anything on the map, Claire? Uh, we do have the percentage split down here. So seven hundred and thirty nine total acres, um seventy five percent on Forest Service, uh ten percent on BLM, and then it's grown to almost fourteen percent on private. I'll point out a couple things from an operational standpoint, they've had three major divisions, a fourth one was structural at one point. Um, but this division alpha here, what's unique about this, and this is something that al- almost everybody we've been working with is not used to this, having a huge lake separating them. And that's where our county resources came in to save the day. So our search and rescue team deployed immediately and maintained their presence until su- Sunday.
Sunday afternoon.
Sunday at, around noon, man. So they were there from Tuesday to Sunday. And um they were set up here at the boat dock, and they were bringing crews and equipment to Interlockin'. Um, so that turned into be hugely valuable, cause what they were able to set up here were pumps and hoses. And if they had to hike that in, that would have taken a long time and wore people out to the point of now that they have to fight a fire after that. So it was a, it was a great resource, it was valuable enough that as we worked through resource ordering, they kept that on their list, and now we have a Westminster crew out there, um that relieved our search and rescue crew. In the entire time, search and rescue did great, maintaining their mission capabilities outside this, so if we had another mission, we were able to pull a boat, if we needed to go to Turquoise Lake or get something on Mount Albert, they, they maintained their readiness.
How many boats do they have total?
We have two boats on search and rescue, and a a whaler and a Zodiac. So they're both out there. And um now, now kind of the same equipment out there with them being relieved. Um, so that was hugely helpful to get across the lake up to that, that point. I I took a trip today um across with the uh incident commander in training, and uh he gave me a tour. We took a boat trip across to here, we went to the the site of where the fire started. Um, and then we hiked in Interlockin Trail um back to the dam and hit a couple spots into it. So he kind of, it was good, it timed it, uh educate me on the, on what they're doing on the ground, so it was really, really good to see that. Um, and honestly, it looks, it looks pretty good. Um, they've said numerous times that this fire's been fueled by the deadened downwood throughout this portion of the forest. This map doesn't show it, but right through here was a Flume Creek, um mitigation work done in twenty eighteen, and that worked beautifully. So here we are, six years later, and it's protecting this neighborhood. And that was a calculated move done by Forest Service six years ago, and it's paying, and we gotta watch it pay off. That work is basically expanded through this. This is looking to be a very healthy burn, as they were explaining to me. And which will protect the lake in the future and the, and the homes in the future also. Any questions on the map? Um, I'll, I'll add in there a closure, I meant to mention closures. Right now, currently the entire area is closed. Um, to include um Willis Gulch Trailhead, at least the Hope Pass, and as we approach our race season, it's a popular area for racers to go. It's currently all closed. Um, they are working on lifting the closure on this western lake to, for, for many reasons, but it'll help the businesses in Twin Lakes. Um, it can bring some normalcy back to our area, they, they, they won't do that early though. Um, but they are looking at, they're running it up their chain of command to see if that's a potential today. Uh, but currently, the closure in this entire area, all in JP County, is initially set till July fifteenth.
Is this gonna have an impact on the, on the races in August?
Um, the initial thought is no.
Okay.
Anything could happen. Um, after seeing it today, I, you know, my untrained eyes says this, we're okay in August. Um, and they're, they're saying the same thing, but we're not there yet, um, so we just have to keep that in the back of our mind. Think, yeah, I just want to.
Cause that, um.
That's, I don't, unless you guys had any other questions on the map.
Does that include the surface closure on the larger Twin Lakes? Like the, whatever, I would, lower, larger?
Um, like this map here?
Yeah, we, yeah, cause I mean, Twin Lakes itself is still closed, right?
So. The lake, yeah, the lakes themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all the, all the entry points around this are all closed.
Yeah.
Highway eighty two is open, we haven't closed highway eighty two.
Okay.
And minus this, like, off-grid county road, we haven't closed roads at all.
Yeah. So that review you mentioned, that's going up the Forest Service chain of command includes at some point reopening Twin Lakes?
Yes, yeah, and initially, it would, it would just be from here out, reopening that. So it'd open up Willis Gulch Trailhead, it'd open up um this for recreational use.
Yeah.
Um, so it really starts to get things moving, and I know our business owners would be pretty happy about that. And so they've heard, um, the agency administrator for the Forest Service went and talked to Twin Lakes at least yesterday, does that sound familiar? I think it's yesterday or the day before, just to hear from Twin Lakes and how it's affecting them, so. It was, it was a good, good move on their part to hear that community, and their concerns, so they're taking that into their decision-making. And that's part of the collaborative effort that I mentioned earlier, is they're, they're really listening to the communities best they can, taking in their expertise, taking in the objectives, and and adding all that into the mix of the decision-making. I'm just gonna. Um, I already mentioned the uh cause, the viewing cause, I mean, it works out pretty strong right now. It's still an open investigation, we haven't closed it yet. Um, there's a, there's a tip line that the Forest Service established, so if anybody has any information about that. Um, we did look at cameras from the power station, they have some impressive cameras over there, but after seeing the site in person today, there's no way that camera's gonna catch movement in that area. And um, and even, I don't think, even it's an amazing cam, I don't know if it'd be able to.
Shield it by trees?
Correct, correct, yeah. Um, but, you know, our, our goal right now, with everybody's attention on fire, is education, you know? The incident commander in training that was uh, that received that tour from today, said that's, like, he, he's been doing this for twenty years or so. He said the best tool is prevention, the best tool is education. And um, and so we're, we're gonna work with whoever we can, we'll take our part in helping educate people. And I know a lot of our communities are very interested right now in helping out with the education bit, whether they volunteer at trailheads, hand out flyers, whatever it takes, I know a lot of things are on the table right now on how to counter that. I know there's other agencies taking the lead on that, um, and I'm hearing that from the community directly also. So we'll join in that as much as possible. Um, there's also signs, as you guys probably saw up front, there's a huge sign with fire information. Um, they've placed that in key locations near the fire in JP County, they're getting, their PIOs are getting out, talking to the community, and making sure that messaging is getting out, and I really see that result paying off.
Yeah, right again, I was just, you're on the rules, I didn't stop you.
Um, but it has, it has been a learning experience, and thankfully I have experts out there. The, the, the IC has, um, he, they're about to kick him out the door here in a, in a couple months. He's had a lifelong career, and we were able to learn from him. He was very engaged, uh, and uh, and was passing that information on. So it's been, overall, considering the situation, there's, there's more positives than negatives. And um, so we're soaking those up, and I'm also using this as an opportunity to prepare for the next time. Hopefully, the next time doesn't happen, but if it does, I feel a lot more prepared for this.
I think you guys did a great job. All, all the feedback I've, I've gotten and the, the information that I've personally received has been really good, accurate, timely, and informative. And I think that's, that's the big thing, you know, during these incidents, is people wanna know, they wanna know what's going on, they wanna know how this, you know, all this. And I think your, your team and and all of your partners did a wonderful job, so I, I commend you guys. I know it's a big, long hours, and um, you, you, all of you did a great job.
Appreciate that. It's definitely been a strong.
And I think I speak for the rest of the team too.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions for me? I know Claire had some more information that she wanted to touch on too, um, before I keep going and talk a lot, sorry.
I guess one, one, one thing, Sarah, you mentioned at the beginning, um, the, I forget the acronym, but the, the burn recovery.
Oh, yeah, one assessment, yeah.
There, there, there. Um, and I don't know if there's any, I mean, other than just sort of s- staying aware of it, is there any role or input from us in that? is there any role or input from us in that? Maybe you're the wrong person to ask, but.
Yeah, no, I think. I'll let you answer a little more to that. I just had a conversation with Brian Banks, who's the agency administrator for the US Forest Service right now. And so he, he mentioned to me and along with Pat Mercer that they're already looking at those next stages and how, what their next steps are going to be. Definitely a little more technical and over my head, but you know, what I picked up was they're considering it now. And they're looking into those, what those next steps are faster than normal. So this is rolling really well. You know, one positive about this fire is the timing of the year is happening. It's early in the season. We have so much help in there and these crews are eager to get out there. They mentioned that we have seven hotshot crews on this fire, which is unheard of. And we have almost 300 ground people out there digging the line. And that was cool. I saw that in action today. They're out there just, I was out there in my clean shirt. Their yellow shirts were black. And they were, you know, still chipping away, sweat dripping off of them. So that's what really contained this fire. The airshow was cool, but it's the people on the ground.
It's a tough job too.
Yeah, they're busting their tail on it still a week later. So they're, they're, so they're rolling into that. Their leadership at, at the IC is already considering next steps. I don't have a great answer for you on who, who they want involved in that. I wouldn't be afraid to step in and ask them.
I know, I know Brian Banks had compiled a list of like other water stakeholders, CSU, Aurora, Pueblo, like folks downstream. So I know that communication's been going out. And I think it's, yeah, depending on when they get back, there could be a few things that are done on the ground or we wait for a weather event, but maybe Claire has some more information. But it seems, it appears that the communication is being done well. And everybody, I haven't, I haven't had any angry or upset phone calls from folks down in the basin. Everybody seems to be apprised of what's going on. So that's much appreciated.
Correct.
I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit. I think you guys summed up the there really well and the work that's being done there. And that'll be continuous process to monitor that area. I think Chris Nakarado put it really well at the end of the community meeting. He's like, you know, Twin Lakes is looking really as famous for its aspen groves. Y'all are going to get a few more. So I'm excited to see this, this area grow and we have over the years. But I really kind of wanted just to talk on whole community partnerships this incident because it's been really, not surprising to me. We have a really strong community here, but it's just been really overwhelmingly grateful to see all these community partnerships come together. And these aren't even partnerships, you know, in Lake County government, like OEM and the sheriff's office or OEM and, you know, public health stepping in. I'm talking support from Silver Wama, from those barbecue who stepped up with like seven hours' notice to feed 150 firefighters. You know, Tamara, we talked about the race series a little bit. She did a lot of work with sheriff and there were just no questions asked. She was like, I'm rerouting, I'm sending out this messaging. Let me know if you guys need anything. But there was no hesitation for her to support and help without taking any additional burden. Or we didn't have to give any additional burden to help her do that. I went to, I was able to go down to Dexter's Point a few nights ago. I spoke with their logistics chief. He was kind of giving me a rundown of how they had set up Dexter's Point. And he says, you know, we really pride ourselves on when we can use local and funnel money back into your community. And I look over and right there, I see the Red Bull Tool Rentals logo on a piece of equipment. He's like, we had that in here without two hours. He was shocked at how quick they were. They've been going and dropping money at Safeway, Ace, O'Reilly's. I've seen a lot of trucks in town for firefighters either, either getting off the line or going in for the night. So I like to think they're visiting our local restaurants. So really just those community partnerships have been absolutely phenomenal. Search and rescue's influence really can't be understated. What they're doing is almost unprecedented with this boat operation. I'm really just thankful to have this Swiss Army knife that took on so much without really asking for anything. So it's been a really pleasurable experience to work with all these different people and just see the support pouring in, pouring in for everyone. You know, I was constantly asked, how can I help? How can I help? We saw that on Facebook. Do you need volunteers? Do you need food? What do you need? And I'm just really appreciative of this community and the support the past few days. So I just wanted to kind of talk about that economic and support.
That's great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have just one quick thing to add. Well, I, I was at the Saturday event. And again, like it's just great to hear. I mean, just clear, there's really good communication, but the three of us were thanked for, the phrase was not self-deploying to the microphone.
I was out of town, Dad.
No, but I, it was appreciated that, yeah, we were present, but not overly present.
That was well organized and well ran.
Yeah.
There was a pretty good crowd there.
Yeah, yeah, that was a good turnout. And I mean, the briefing was clearly really well organized. It was impressive.
I'm hoping that these Thursday town halls that are coming up are going to be well attended too. I'm sure.
Yeah, it was amazingly, I mean, fortuitous is maybe the wrong word, but like extremely timely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. On, on many accounts, the on-the-ground work done, mitigation work done prior, what the fire that's happened. And then the Forest Service also has continued work to the, to the west of the, this current burn. So there's going to be a lot of activity. And, and yeah, it's all just, I don't know. Kind of good timing or good plan. I, I don't know. It's, it's working out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, one other thought, I mean, yes, we're under 1,000 acres. And I was just like reading sort of like one of the California fires, which isn't even remotely big for their perspective. It was like over 10,000 acres overnight. And I was like, well, that puts things in perspective about how actually, I mean, great the response was, but yeah, I mean, essentially luckily we were that it was early season, not when things were dried out in August or whenever. So, but, but I think like for the upcoming mitigation town halls, like just a wake-up call that like, you know, this was great in terms of the response and how it turned out. But we have the potential to, for something bigger here that we need to keep. This is not how it, we need to keep working so that it stays this way, not 1,000 acres overnight.
You know the words, let your guard down, right?
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was trying to say.
You know, we're extremely fortunate. I got a text from a friend last night and they're like, have you seen the fires in New Mexico? And I was like, no, too busy with mine. But I was actually watching a live stream camera of their evacuation centers, a community building, and you could see the fire. And they were getting ready to evacuate their evacuation center. So we're extremely fortunate, you know. We would never want this to happen, but we're fortunate that we have the resources to be able to call in this, in this early season.
And it also demonstrated the power of mitigation work. As we saw with Flume Creek, work they did and work they did around there. It's a good example of that, you know. So there, I know sometimes there's people that question that type of work. And if it's, you know, if it's just putting everybody at risk or why are we doing this and this fired it.
Yeah. Well, thank you all for the time. I'll leave the map here. It will make a trip to city council tonight.
Okay.
If you guys would like to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was a good time too.
I was almost on the roof of this. It's like this is an operation.